Okay. Hello, hello everyone. Welcome to our March 17th St. Patrick's Day regular city council meeting, the town of Atherton. It's 6:01. We just came out of a closed session meeting. Sorry for a couple of minutes being late. Anthony, will you please? Well, can we do our little pledge of allegiance?
Yeah.
Maybe we can all mute. We can just do, I think we should do the pledge of allegiance. Okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of America. For which it stands, one and under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For every.
Everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Hawkins.
I'm here.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lempres.
I'm here.
And Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, and I'm here also. So we're, we have several presentations. We have a proclamation to our Commander Joe Wade upon his retirement. And, oh my gosh.
Wow, there he is.
Hi, Commander Wade. Hi. It's so sad to see you go. Oh, my gosh. Thank you very much for all of your work. I have a proclamation and I saw the kudo board that they were putting together for you. Is that a secret?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
I didn't know, I mean, what's going on? But should I read? I'd like to read the proclamation to you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Whereas Joe Wade, a veteran leader within the Atherton Department of Police, has served the town of Atherton and our residents with an unwavering commitment to the, their safety and security for 22 faithful years. And whereas the city council of the town of Atherton, along with the entire community, would like to honor the contributions that Commander Wade has made during his law enforcement career with the Atherton Department of Police. And whereas during his tenure with the town, Commander Wade has served admirably, and this is my insert, in virtually every level of our police department, from patrol officer, school resource officer, SWAT team member, gang task force member, defensive tactics instructor, detective patrol sergeant, detective sergeant, lieutenant commander, emergency operations manager, public information officer, and acting chief. That's a lot. That's a lot of service. Really, thank you so much, Joe. And I'm not finished. And whereas through his professionalism, calm demeanor, sound interpersonal skills, and keen sense of humor, Commander Wade has helped establish a department culture that supports trust, honesty, integrity, and transparency. He will continue to faithfully serve the San Mateo law enforcement community in his retirement as an academy police recruit defensive tactics instructor, developing future successful police officers. And whereas Joe shared his gratitude to having the very unique opportunity to have worked with the town of Atherton, he loved, serving the residents who so very much supported him, and the entire Department of Police team, and alongside colleagues he respected, trusted, developed, and mentored. And now therefore, as mayor of the town of Atherton and on behalf of the Atherton City Council, I hereby commend the outstanding community service performed by Joe Wade during his law enforcement career of 22 years, and wish him and his supportive family the very best in his retirement. Thank you so much, Commander Wade, and we will miss you.
Well deserved, really well deserved.
Hey, thank you all very much. It was, as I've told many people, I don't know if I would like doing the job if I didn't work. In Atherton, the residents have always been so good to me. The, the men and women of the police department have been awesome to work with. And you've given me the ability to be able to retire at a, you know, at my age and, and start something new. And I really appreciate the time that I had there, and I appreciate all of you.
Anyone else want to say something to Commander?
Mayor, Mayor, if I could just say something.
Chief, yes.
You know, coming to a new police department, you're, you're wondering and you're curious, you know, what the team's gonna be like? What's my partner commander gonna be like? And I gotta be serious and honest. I could not have asked for a better partner in crime than Joe Wade, and just outstanding in every way. You were a team. I'm proud to call him my friend. He's a great guy. We did some great work over the last four years, and I'm very proud of the opportunity to work with him and Joe. I wish you and your family the best, as I've already told you.
Great.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeGoya has his hand raised.
Oh, I just wanted to acknowledge the tremendous service that Joe has provided to this community. It, it is immeasurable. I really mean that. And it's not just meeting at meetings and, and serving this department in just about every possible capacity that someone could serve in, from an initial officer to an acting chief. But he has provided so many residents of Atherton with superb advice about how to protect themselves and their family and their property. It, you have just done a wonderful service to this town, Joe, and we are truly, truly going to miss you.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated.
And I have Councilmember Widmer has a hand raised, and then Council Vice Mayor Lempres.
Okay, thank you. So Joe, I really appreciate everything you've done. You know, since, since I've been on the council and talking to different residents, everybody in town knows you and has positive things to say about you. You know, you've touched so many people's lives and made a big difference, and I think that really you've, you know, portrayed to, to the community, the type of community policing that we're doing here, responsive, as well as, you know, great on the interpersonal level. So thank you very much. Please stay in touch. It was, it was great to know you for, for my 11 years here on the council. And, you know, I hope we can continue, you know, some sort of association. So best of luck to you, and, and thank you again on behalf of everybody here at Atherton as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. One, I agree with everything everyone else has said, but, but Joe, one thing I wanted to say is that you have been a real culture carrier here. And it's, it's a great skill and a great benefit and a huge value to the town. Because the, the, the culture, the, the police department has held for 22 years has in many ways flowed through you and from you. And that's a great service to all of us, something you should be very proud of and something I really appreciate. So, thank you, sir.
Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
City Manager Roderick.
I'd just like to say, Joe, that I echo everything that's been said this evening as well, but one of the best things about, about you that I've experienced is in your role as the acting police chief for that period of time. And, and that was probably the, the best time that I had interacting with a police chief, no offense, Chief McCully. But there was, there was no blue wall, and, and I really appreciated that in your leadership style over there. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, George.
So, thank you again, Commander Wade. We will miss you. And I wish you the very, very best in your retirement and in training those new officers, because we need those good new officers also. Okay.
Yes, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Okay. All right. So we have one more retirement. Don Dumphy, a veteran police officer here in the town of Atherton for over 20 years. I understand, George, did you say that he was not going to be able to come because of family illness?
That's correct.
Okay, so I won't read his proclamation. We will make sure he receives it, but just saying that we so, so very, very much appreciate his service to the town, and he has made many, many friends and dedicated admirers throughout the town over his 20 years with us. Our next presentation is going to be from Hip Housing Representative Chris Sterken, Community Outreach Specialist. We have a part of that in our packet. Hip Housing, do we have Chris to give a presentation? And I think that the presentation is a relatively short one. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Sterken. Can everyone hear me?
Barely. I hope you can turn your up a little bit.
Let me, I'll stop using my headphones.
I think that might be best, because it's, it sounds like you're in a tunnel a little bit.
Okay. There, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
We should probably dampen it down just a little bit now. Yeah.
Speak a little bit more softly there. Please. All right, then. So, good evening. I'm Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Lempres, the council members. My name is Chris Sterken. I'm the Community Outreach Specialist at Human Investment Project Housing, or Hip Housing. And tonight I am going to briefly share about our programs, and then present a few selections, as you see on the screen, from our 2021 calendar, and then share a couple brief stories about clients who are currently working with in Atherton, and then follow up with, or close with some statistics on our work in Atherton over the past year. So I timed it a few times, which should be about eight minutes. All right, then. So for those of you who may not know me, I, I grew up in Belmont. I live in Edward City. I've been with Hip Housing for almost two years. Started with them as the North County Home Sharing Coordinator, and now, of course, the Community Outreach Specialist. And for those who are maybe on the call who don't know us, we're a nonprofit based in the city of San Mateo, although we serve the entire county of San Mateo. We have three core programs. Those are Home Sharing, Self-Sufficiency, and Property Development. Home Sharing Program, which is my favorite, and which I promote as Community Outreach Specialist, matches individuals who have a spare room in their home or an accessory dwelling in a REU with individuals looking for a place to rent, or who have a housing voucher to support their rent. And then our Self-Sufficiency Program is for families with children where the parent or guardian is enrolled in school or a job training program. We help them achieve their education and career goals by providing a housing scholarship, case management, and life scope workshops. And finally, our Property Development Program owns and manages 28 properties across the county. And so, as you can see here on the screen, this is one submission to our calendar contest. This is our 19th calendar that we've produced. Been doing this since 2001, and every year, our calendar features information about our affordable housing programs, as well as the hard work of children in K through fifth grade from across the county. And they answer the prompt, what does home mean to me? And so as you can see, Akshaya Jain said that, you know, my home is a person which opened its arms to hold me tight during this pandemic. And I really think that Akshaya captured the significance of home in so many ways through this piece. Not only is it a roof over her head, but also a place where she receives healthcare potentially, where she's going to school, where her parent or guardian's working, and where she watches Netflix. Next slide, please. Thank you. And then Declan said that, you know, my home keeps us safe. I like being at home because I can play and be with my family and my friends. Next slide, please. And Isabel Chung said that what my home means to me is my dad, mom, and my brother and my family. Home also means where joy is and comfort and where I feel safe. Next slide, please. And finally, Noam Ismails said that home is shelter for the heart. You make home, or else you just have a house. And I believe that each of these messages really do capture the significance of a safe and affordable home, and that's what Hip Housing provides. Sorry, you may hear the train in the background. Let it pass there. All right. And as an example, I just want to share a couple brief anecdotes from about two of our clients that I've worked with in Atherton. So one was actually referred to me by one of the council members, and I want to thank them. They know who they are. They were referring this client to us. She's currently battling cancer and volunteers at a local parish in Melville Park, and lives in a overcrowded housing situation where she lives in a room with three other people, and one of her housemates is, you know, not treating her so well. So she's desperate to find a place. And so I'm really glad that this council member referred her to us, and I've personally made sure that she was signed up for an appointment, and she actually interviewed with one of our home sharing coordinators on Friday last week. So I'm really hopeful that she will find a match through our program. As for the second client, I want to mention this client. Let's see, is an older adult who's had a difficult time applying for affordable housing. And as the COVID-19 pandemic has laid bare, there is a real digital divide in our community, especially for older adults who may not have access to the internet, nor access to a device with access to the internet. So this particular client has had difficulty applying for affordable housing. So what I did was simply help her renew her passport through Red Cafe, which is the Housing Authority's portal to apply for, you know, affordable housing. And in addition to that, I've helped her sign up for my turn, so she can find out when she can get vaccinated. And her latest request has been simply to find some resources for dental assistance, because she received a really expensive dental bill. So at Hip Housing, we do a lot more than just find housing for people. We also do information and referrals. And so that's actually something we're looking to expand. We're launching a new information and referral program in partnership with Stanford. We're working with the four graduate students right now to draft an implementation plan for that program, so we can follow up with the clients who give us a call asking for resources, like food or dental assistance or affordable housing, and then count them as clients and potentially get additional funding and add additional staff if needed. So a lot of great things going on at Hip. And as for the work that we're current, that we did over the past year in Atherton. Anthony, can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you so much. Last year, we received nine inquiries from Atherton residents. Four residents and five people employed in Atherton applied to our program, and one resident and one employee did catch. So your support really does make a difference, and I hope that the calendar really, you know, captures that the spirit of our programs. And I will be dropping off calendars for each of you to Francesca later on this week. So you can expect those in the mail sometime soon. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Chris, for your presentation. I'll tell you, it's always great to see the calendars and all the kids' art and everything. We have Councilmember Widmer who would like to ask a question or make a comment. Councilmember Widmer?
Thanks. Chris, thanks a lot for everything that you do. You know, it's such an important role that Hip Housing does, and, and your interface with the, the different residents really makes a big difference, and, you know, it shows that you really care about them. So just want to thank you very much.
Any other member of the council want to make a comment? I'd open it up to the public if anybody wants to make a comment. Otherwise, thank you very much, Chris. It was a great presentation. Appreciate all the work you do for our community.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call on our city attorney Mona Ibrahim to do a report out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. The council did meet in closed session earlier this evening to talk about labor negotiations. There, the reportable action is that the council provided direction to staff. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna, again, our next item on the agenda is to open up the meeting to any member of the public who would like to make a comment. Anthony has some instructions on how you may do that. Anthony?
Yes, for anyone who's joining the meeting, if you're a member of the public or have a graphic up, you can use the participants button at the bottom of your screen. If you're joining by Zoom link, to raise your hand and you'll be called upon to make that comment. You can also send a text message. The number's there, and also post it in the chat. Or if you're calling in by num, by phone, you can dial star nine. You'll also be able to raise your hand to comment on the item, and the mayor will allow those, those comments to take place. Mayor, if, if you will allow, I know that the chief also wanted to introduce our newly promoted commander to you, because I see no, nobody interested in making a public comment at this time.
Absolutely. And I just see the chat from Felicity to everyone. We want to be introduced to our new commander, Dan Larson. I wasn't aware that he was here with us. So Anthony, Commander Larson, are you available to be introduced? There's Chief McCully. You want to?
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me squeeze this in. So, you know, Joe served us very well for many years, but I I would have had the pleasure and the honor to promote Sergeant Larson to commander this morning along with his wife and two little boys, mother, and his brother, who's a deputy with the county, working up at Woodside. Dan served the, the agency in many different roles. He's proven himself as an outstanding professional. It serves as a really great succession success story. Nothing better. I'm more proud of than to be able to promote somebody from within. Dan's got some big shoes to fill. He's already shown that he's more than capable, and I really look forward to working with him in the future and continuing the great work that Commander Wade and I have done. So I'll let Dan speak for himself.
Commander Larson.
Yeah, thank you very much for this opportunity. Definitely big shoes to fill with the departure of Commander Wade, and I'm just really looking forward to continuing the work of the police department and working with the community and the council, and just really going to enjoy this new role, and I'm up for the challenge. So thank you for the opportunity.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Welcome.
Mayor Lewis, we also have someone who'd like to make a public comment. Rob Sealy.
Okay. Rob, you have three minutes?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, so my name is Rob Sealy, and I am with the California Water Service. And I wanted to reach out to everybody today and basically follow up on an email I sent about slightly time sensitive, but something that, that really speaks to the most vulnerable in the community. By way of background, it's our understanding that the state is currently determining how to administer and prioritize funding made available through HR 133 allocated to California, and maybe in the position to do the same for HR 1319 funding as well. We feel like it's critical that the state administer these, these and other federal fund relief for bill relief equitably, and in a manner that avoids unfairly excluding customers of the CPUC-regulated water suppliers. So the proposal in question is that they may exclude anyone who is serviced by a CPUC-regulated water supplier that does cover Atherton as well as a large part of the rest of the peninsula, and really will impact those that are dealing with the biggest hardships right now with COVID. So what I wanted to do today was just reach out, flag the issue for everybody, let you know that I had sent an email, but I know how busy everybody is and how sometimes things can fall through the cracks, and invite you all to, to reach out to me at your earliest convenience. If you have questions, I would be happy to answer them. My contact information is, is in that email. So with that, I can yield the rest of my time back, and I want to thank the mayor and council for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy, for bringing this to our attention. We have a comment from Vice Mayor Lempres.
Just to separate, I want to let you know, I got a note from Julie Quinlan, who's having a technical issue, but said she'd like to make a public comment.
Ah, yes, Julie, you have to unmute yourself. There you go.
That, that I know how to do. I fortunately am not on Zoom that much, so that's why I'm kind of bad. I'm going to get to it. I live on Maple Avenue, as many of you know, and along with other neighbors who live here, we're right smack in the center of the Civic Center project. You know, we've been living through the disruption of the construction these last two years, and I am very concerned about landscape screening of the corporation yard. Before the project, there was a lot of foliage, and no one noticed the corporation yard because it was screened. All of this foliage has been removed, and the current landscape plan does not give sufficient screening. Now, George Roderick has offered a meeting with a landscaper to discuss plantings, which we appreciate. The bigger problem is that two weeks ago, plantable space around the gate to the yard was paved over. This means where there used to be screening and dirt for those plants, there cannot be screening now. I don't know who was planning this area, but that extra pavement in the planting area really never should have been allowed to go in, since it guarantees that the yard screening will always be less than it was before the project. Now, this corner is heavily trafficked by neighbors, and everyone agrees the corporation yard is an eyesore. We need taller screening, and also to reopen enough of the paved area next to the driveway to get some taller plants in like it was before the project started. Now, George has told me that it's possible the yard could be moved to the park, but that's going to take quite a while. And I have to say, moving the yard is not a sure thing, because I know town politics. There are many passionate advocates for the park who might have something to say about that. So I don't think we can count on it. All we're asking is that the plantable area near the yard gate be restored, just so that it's not a change from what it was before the project and isn't made worse, that the landscape planting be adjusted to mask the corporation yard. It's been that way, as I've been coming here my whole life, and I've never noticed the yard until that stuff was taken down. We've had to live with this project for two years, and we, you know, and to have things look worse in our neighborhood because of the Civic Center project, it just isn't right. I know you're working hard to wrap up the project, and I urge you to please make sure that these problems are fixed. That's all I'm going to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie, for bringing this to our attention. I'm glad that you've spoken to City Rod, Manager Roderick about it, and I'm sure he's going to deal with it as, see fit, as, as best he can. Thank you, Julie. Any other member of the public have a comment at this point? Anthony?
I have no, I have no hands or, or other indications, Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to close public comments and move on to item number five. It's our city manager's written report. City Manager Roderick.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. You do have the written report in your agenda packet, so I'm not going to go through there. Happy to answer any questions the council may have. Two items of note is we're now in the orange tier, and the rumor on the street is we may be in the next tier up in the next few coming weeks, which could make some changes in activities allowed at the park. Unfortunately, there are, there is still the three household limit on small private gatherings. There are exceptions for indoor gatherings related to weddings and on small private gatherings. There are exceptions for indoor gatherings related to weddings and cultural religious type events. But beyond that, it's still pretty restrictive. And you have that in also in the consent agenda item, the certification of the continuing emergency. The second item I wanted to mention that's not in the city manager's report is Anthony put out a news flash this morning about the April 17th e-waste, e-spread compost event that's going to be going on in the park on Saturday, April 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can find more information on that on the town's website. And that concludes my report. Again, staff's here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you so much for your report. Any member of the council have a question or a comment? Yes, Vice Mayor, you have to unmute yourself.
Yes, I did. I had two, two questions. One is, George, on page 13 is a chart of police activity and citations. I noticed we're down a little bit and just wondered what what's going on there.
Chief? You still on the line, Chief?
Still here. I'm not sure of the actual detail, Vice Mayor, but actually our statistics have been up over the last several months, down over the year primarily due to COVID.
Page 13, are you, you're talking about the the number of citations?
Yes. So let me pull it up.
February, March, February, March.
So I've got on page, is it 13 of 28? When you just looked at officer initiated activity and citations, you compare it from February to September or October or November, we're just, we're down a bit.
Let me take a look at that and I can get back to you. Like I said, overall, since last March, we've been down our operations pretty much have been opened back up, you know, based on officer comfort, which everybody is anxious to work and have been working the last several months. From my review, the activity has been up. You know, actual citations issued might be down, but activity overall is up. But I'll take a look at that in response.
Okay. And my second question dealt with building activity and permit fees. There's a question relative to the budget. I just didn't understand one of the charts on page 28 of 28. When it looks like the activity year-to-date is down versus budgeted, I want to make sure I'm understanding that properly. Is that budgeted year-to-date as well?
Let's go year-to-date, budgeted year-to-date. I think they're year-to-date numbers. They're both, they both should be year-to-date numbers, but I'll verify that and we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, it surprised me that we'd be that far down. But yeah, look, anyway, get back to you. That'd be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Widmer, did you have a question? You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, in the past, you know, of course, we've changed this chart periodically, George, but in the past, they've showed the total year's budget and then compared us where we are. So and then then the things started to change, but I just wanted to point that out. So.
Yeah, I'll verify which it is.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other member of the council have questions, comments on city manager's report? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Any member of the public have a question or comment on the city manager's report? Item numbers five.
Mayor, I do have a hand raised from the public. I don't know if it's for the city manager's report, but I will give him an opportunity.
Okay.
Him or her? And they just disappeared on me.
Well, maybe.
It's gone now. So if they.
We'll circle back. So we'll move on to our consent calendar. Items number six through 12. I want to remind everyone that the consent calendar items are routine in nature and are generally considered in one motion and adopted by a single vote of the city council. If discussion regarding a consent calendar item is desired, the members of the city council, public or staff wishing to pull the item should indicate the time that we call for consideration. So I'm going to ask if any member of the council has a question on any item six through 12, either clarifying or if you want to pull any item. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to make a comment about item six. I don't want to pull it, but I'd like to make a comment about item six.
Okay. Would you like to do that now?
Sure, happy to. It's simply that we have been passing on consents, a resolution like this now for a year of continuing emergency and I'd like maybe at the next council meeting to actually pull it from consent and have a real conversation with what we've been doing and where we are. Not that I'm critical of anything we've done. I just think that we owe the public an explanation and we shouldn't be doing it. You know, it's an extraordinary situation, a continuing emergency. So I'd like to talk about it a little at the next meeting.
Okay, well taken. Any other member of the council? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Does any member of the public have a question or a comment on items number six through 12, which is the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close that and come back to the council call for a motion to approve the consent calendar items number six through 12.
So moved.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Widmer. Can I get a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor, second. All those in favor? I?
I'll do a roll call with your commission, Mayor.
Sure.
Councilmember Hawkins? DeGolio?
Yes.
Widmer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Limpres?
Aye.
Mayor Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on to our regular agenda, item number 13, which is really the bulk of our meeting tonight. And it is a very, very important item because it has to do with our town center and all that is going on with it. And hopefully, having heard a comment from a neighbor that two years seems to be unending construction in her neighborhood, we'd like to get this wrapped up as much as we can. So city manager, would you like to kick this off for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Maple has been a very busy street for construction there. It's very narrow and there are, I had to guess like three ongoing residential construction projects on that street. Plus, at the end of it, at the cap at the corner is the town center project, which has been a very long construction project. So there is some concern out there. This report provides a summary of the town center's current ongoing operations and status from Marty as far as where the project is. But there are really three items within this report for the council's consideration this evening. The first is some direction regarding the new communications building that's required to be built to replace some existing temporary trailers that are there. And then two, one subcommittee report from the city council and then one council liaison report. So the one that staff is looking for feedback on is the communications building. As part of the approved town center project plans, the existing communications buildings, which are two trailers behind the police department, need to be replaced. AT&amp;T is currently housed in one of the trailers. And then the town has its 911 dispatch communications equipment in one of the trailers. And then we also have a hub for Atherton Fiber. As part of the Atherton Fiber Agreement with the town for provision of dark fiber, we are committed to building a 20 by 20 space for them to use for the hub. They have to outfit the space and pay for what's going on the inside. We just need to provide a shell. AT&amp;T will be providing the cost for their portion of the structure pursuant to an agreement with the town. And then the town needs to do its share for its communications equipment for the dispatch tower that's currently there now. So staff's been looking at three alternatives for the types of building. You've got concrete block building, which is probably the most expensive. You've got a concrete tilt-up type panel building, which is middle of the road. And then you've got the lesser expensive modular building, much like the trailers that we're in now at the park. That's the least expensive of the options. And from staff's perspective, is actually the most, not only the most economical, but the most future-proof for us because technology is going to change. It may shrink in size. We may not need the tower at some point. We may end up with a monopole somewhere closer to town hall. AT&amp;T may no longer be there. That tower may disappear. So there's lots of evolution that could occur in the next five or 10 years. So what we're looking for is council feedback on the aesthetic of the building. Whatever building is there is going to be screened with vegetation and fencing. So staff's recommending that the council authorize the modular building for mobile modular as the solution. So that's the staff report. Robert Ovadia is here. He's done the bulk of the work on this research to put this together. He's happy to answer any questions the council may have, but we're mainly looking for that direction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that report. Thank you for all the detail in this, in the staff report also. Any member of the council have a question or a comment about this item on the agenda? Councilmember Widmer, hi. Unmute.
Yes. Okay, so George, first off, I appreciate and concur just on the face with what you said. But one of the questions that I have that I forgot to ask you on Tuesday was the security of the trailer versus some of the other buildings because since some of the PD communications equipment would be in there, we don't want to have anything go wrong with that. So I guess that, have you looked at it from that standpoint and you still feel comfortable that the trailer is the right choice?
Yes, and I believe we will probably end up adding security cameras to the, to the, to the site area for access. Of course, key panel doors for access and it'll be fenced as well.
Okay.
But, 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 well, if I could, if I could ask a follow-on question, then.
Sure, of course.
So, so, but the, but the walls to the trailer are rather thin and you know, somebody could break in, I guess, is a concern. We wouldn't want to have our communications impacted severely, I guess, is the question.
That's true. And there is a difference, I agree, between the the concrete block versus the trailers. Robert, are you aware of any bigger issues between the two, security-wise?
I'll say that the council member is correct in terms of the the thickness of the walls. These are modular units. They are, they are stick-built. They are going to be stick-built wood frame. We can have a conversation with mobile modular about maybe having a thicker exterior wall behind the the panel surface. But I think, as you indicated, we are going to have steel doors with key, with access locks. And the, the building is not intended to have any windows either.
And it's going to be alarmed.
Yeah.
Any other member of the council have a comment, a question about this? Diana? Yes?
I don't really have a question. I was just going to follow up from what the resident said is making sure that we screen these. If we go with the, with something that's not very attractive, let's make sure it's not in the line of sight of any of the residents.
I think that in any event, the building would be screened. I mean, landscaped and camouflaged.
Yes.
Okay. Any other member? Rick, do you have a comment on this? An opinion?
I think, I mean, I, not really. I like the cost of the temporary versus the more substantial. If we think that there's a risk and that the the preformed option, number two, is better because of the risk of break-in to the temporary, then I, then I guess I think we should consider that. I, I think to reproduce what we have at the, at the police ancillary building, the the first option is not one that we should pursue. I think, I think it's too costly and I think that technology is going to change. I think there really is a substantial issue that technology could change. We could, we could decide at some point along here, or AT&amp;T could decide that they don't want to use this tower and that we need to change there and that that change would make it make sense to change this building. I think that's very likely at some point in the next 15 years. And because of that, I'm more inclined to go with the, with the modular design.
Okay. Vice Mayor Limpres?
And now I think George's reasoning made perfect sense to me. And Rick's there, the modular design, maybe not the most attractive thing on earth, but it's, it does help future-proof and gives us some options because I think Rick's right, that technology is changing quite rapidly in the space.
Thank you. And you know, I personally agree that I think we should go with a modular. I, I understand the need for making it as secure as possible. And if Robert Ovadia can work with the modular people to beef up the exterior skin of it or we wrap it in constant Tina wire and then grow vines all over it. I mean, you know, that might services. But I think that the, the expense differential is something that we really need to be aware of and also the technology. So with that, I'm willing to give the city manager direction to move and Public Works Director direction that we will pursue the modular format.
Can I ask?
Sure. And then we'll open it up for public, I guess.
Oh, well, go. Okay, and, and if you want to delay my question until after a public comment, I'm perfectly happy to wait.
No, go ahead because we've been discussing this.
My question, what we're talking about, if we, whatever facility we use for the communication center and it seems like there's an inclination to go with the modular, we certainly are going to want to screen it. We all recognize the importance of screening. This facility, you know, is at the corner of the little parking area that's going to be on the resident's side of the new road that goes from Ashfield to Fair Oaks Lane. And, and I think there's, there's a complete consensus that we need it screened. It does raise for me the question of exactly what we're doing with respect to screening the corp yard, which I think is appropriate to inquire about because our subject matter is the town center. And my recollection of the design is that we're changing the configuration of Maple and Station Lane. So in fact, that the, what was the area, the corp yard is being reduced and there's going to kind of be a diagonal cutoff rather than a perpendicular turn from from what had been Station Lane to Maple. And, and George, I just wonder if you can comment on the issue of screening the corp yard facility because in the course of making that change, no doubt, there was some planting. I think there was a fair amount of planting that got removed or that had to be removed in order to create that diagonal cutoff. But I've always assumed that there would be planting that would be put up between the new Station Lane, you know, the, the diagonal
So.
and corp yard. I just want to confirm that.
Well, thank you, George, for putting up your screen.
So I can explain it a little bit if you like.
And yes, and then we have members of the public. So Councilmember DeGolio, we really weren't, you're kind of mixing our metaphors here. I'm sorry to say. I think I should have taken your advice and held you off.
Response if you want.
No, let's, let's go ahead. I think the city manager is ready to discuss this because, you know, it's an important issue. I mean, the screening of these ugly buildings, you know, is really important.
It is. So, so you have, what you have on your screen here on the left is what it used to look like. There was a point of reference here, as we can move to the right, is the SFPUC water line easement running down the middle. See that hashed section here?
Right.
Yes.
Can you pull back and just orient us? I'm not oriented there. Can you just tell me what train tracks are and where, you know?
Yeah, let me find a, another.
Well, no, you can do it with that, George. Just, just show Maple and, and Station Lane between the two that it's.
I, I will. I don't have the, the image to expand out.
No, but.
Oh, I can, I can point to it. So this is.
Point to it with your person.
This is Maple. Here.
Yeah.
And it curves to the right as the mouse is going up here. See where the D2 is? That's about where the curve is on Maple and the train tracks are north of that, above it.
I believe D2 is behind the fence right now, or it's about where the diesel is.
No, no, sorry. The, the, the gate to the corp yard is right here.
Oh, I see.
And the, over here, H20, H121.
Okay.
The, the temporary library building that was built is right down here.
Yep. Okay, thank, thank you. That, that oriented me. Thanks.
So what's, what's occurred is this old curve that was here, where the, where the low road used to come in in front of the library is now being extended out. And so this is a planting area that extends further than this old curve used to. And the new road now curves to sort of match the curve in Maple. It makes it a little more gradual, 45 degrees versus the 90-degree turn that it was. So what the resident was talking about is all of this vegetation in here. There was a bunch of heritage trees in there, which are still there. But there was a lot of overgrowth that grew up into those trees that created this tremendous hedge that was probably eight, 10, 12 feet tall. And you really couldn't see the corp yard at all as you drove by in front of the library. But in the course of the construction, we maintained the heritage trees, but all that undergrowth was removed. So now there's new planting beds that are coming along there. But those are of course new plantings, which are smaller. We're going to be planting some trees in there as well. But those are 48-inch box trees. They're big, but they're not, you know, they're not instantaneously going to screen the corp yard. And one of the concerns is, is that all of this vegetation that was right here is now gone. And in fact, because we now curved the road, there's no way to extend that planter bed out to restore some of it. Because if we extend the planter bed out, we effectively close off half the road. So that, that's part of the challenge. An idea was talked about to move the gate here, the corp yard gate, and align it more with Station Lane as it moves out towards Watkins. So as you come down Station Lane from Watkins, you're looking dead at the corp yard fence gate to enter. That's one option. That's not without hurdles because there's a series of rights-of-way and easements from SFPUC, Cal Water, West Bay Sanitary, et cetera, that are underneath that section. And there are also the Caltrain right-of-way that we're currently using. And there is up in this section here, a diesel shed for diesel fuel that we use. And if we relocate that or have to relocate that, that's a question about, one, where do we put it? And two, can we get permits to replace it? So there's issues there. So what we've talked about doing in the interim is having a sit-down, walk-around meeting with the surrounding neighbors, with the landscape architect, and talk about what this vegetation screening is, how we can enhance it to make sure that it does grow up quickly to screen as much as the corp yard as possible. And then what I mentioned to the resident is, takes us all the way back to the beginning of this project when we had the corp yard in the, in the project design. And if you recall, we took that out. And so we weren't doing any enhancements to the corp yard. But if we had left it in there, the building was going to be shrunk a little bit. It was going to be shifted a little bit and some of it was going to be moved to the park. That's what I had suggested we could continue to do at some project in the future. Is take some of the activities out of that corp yard that would tolerate it and move them to the park. And then keep the main, larger activities at the corp yard here, but be able to shrink down the size of the building and its access. And one of the other components is that rear yard gate is currently very busy right now because there's no other way to access the corp yard. And in the new design, when it's completed, the fencing to the corp yard main access is interior to the project site. So this rear yard gate will get less access. And that's, that's kind of the corp yard story at the present.
Okay. So thank you for further discussing the resident's concern on this. And I think that it's a valid concern and we really should pay a lot of attention to it and do what we can to mitigate it. Because not only do the current neighborhood residents don't want to see the ugly corp yard building, but other visitors coming to the town center really, they don't want to see it either. So we need to work on that. So getting back to our initial discussion here about the temporary communications trailer. I think that the consensus of council and direction is that we will go with the trailer, the temporary trailer at this point. But we need to open it up for public comment questions on this one item only having to do with the communications building, whether it's a trailer or concrete tilt-up or concrete block.
No, Mayor, this is Anthony. I believe that the person who has their hand raised was the number that called in earlier who wanted to make a public comment under general comments. So I'll ask if you'd like to take that now or wait until after this item is done.
Let's wait until after this item is done.
Okay, I'll let them know in the chat. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, sir. Okay. So any other members? So I don't see any hands raised in the, in the public arena for comment on this. So if we're finished with it, I think that we should move on to the next item in this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next one is a summary report from the AdHoc Subcommittee, Legends of Atherton. And that is Councilmember DeGolia and Councilmember Hawkins-Benwellian.
Okay. Who wants to take over this?
Well, I can start and Diana can add. I think George sent out a report that essentially summarized the discussion that we had. We had quite a lengthy discussion about the whole concept of Legends of Atherton set of information and presentation. We initially were very focused on the library since that's where the council discussion had originated. And a- and as we discussed that and, and looked at these conference rooms in the library, frankly, we discovered that all of the conference rooms, irregardless of their size, have approximately the same display space, which is the sidewalls. Because the walls of all of the conference rooms facing the internal portion of the library are mostly, they're, they're glass panels that are designed to allow library staff to observe everything that's going on in the conference room. So there's really not, and we'd have to do a change order to create a wall on any of those internal-facing walls. The external-facing walls to the outside are the pressed earth material that nothing can be hung on. And while it's possible to hang things from the ceiling and, and dangle them in front of the wall, you, you're not going to put any kind of a an attachment into the wall itself, which leaves the two sidewalls and all of the conference rooms, whether they're small or large or medium, have exactly the same sidewalls. In fact, the large ones tend to have AV on one of the sidewalls, which leaves really only one wall. And given that there are quite a large number of potential Legends of Atherton, it, it caused us to look at whether we might want to do something in addition to a conference room in the main part of the library or just do something in the main part of the library. And that brought up the issue of the library's programming and how we might impact that programming by suggesting the Legends of Atherton. And in the course of that discussion, Diana, I think very intelligently brought up, what about the train station? And given that the train station is closed and is, our agreement with Caltrain is that we will manage that station. It raised a very interesting point, which is the train station is completely accessible to the community. In fact, probably more easily accessible than the library itself. And, and we have, don't have a design about what to do with it. So the idea of potentially using the train station to display some Legends of Atherton information brings that right to the heart of, of the town itself. And so that's one benefit. Another benefit is it doesn't adversely impact our consideration of what this Legends of Atherton design would be and the timing of the library build-out. Because if, in fact, we're going to do some interior decorating on the Legends of Atherton within the library, we've got to give direction to the library staff and we've got to get our act together very, very quickly. Whereas with the train station, it gives us much more flexibility. So we concluded that the better place to focus this concept is on the train station. It does raise some issues, which certainly involves security because the train station is open, at least currently it's open, and it's, it's open to the weather. So that's something we need to consider. I, I think it's not a big problem, but it's definitely something we need to consider. The, the one other comment I'll make is that we, the, Diana raised the idea that we should consider audiovisual in addition to, you know, photos and, and other kind of wall hanging or display material. And the more I thought about it, the more I liked the idea of audiovisual because it can enable us to put a large number of people in that format. And my guess is that there's, you know, a good number of people that could qualify as Legends of Atherton. So I, I really like that idea. I think we, we need to work on exactly what it's going to look like and, and how we would design it, but I think it's extremely interesting.
Thank you.
Sorry, I do.
You have one more? Okay. Because I want to give Councilmember Manuel a, a chance to add to her.
Oh, she, she can do the, what I was going to do. That's fine. She'll cover it.
No, go ahead.
I hadn't finished what you were going to say.
I, I was going to say that this whole concept of both using the train station and including an audiovisual display raises the issue of, well, who are the Legends of Atherton and how are we going to choose who the Legends of Atherton are? And it gives us, and, and I think there's an outreach opportunity to the community to include community members in that process, which I think can help involve those community members, both in the town center and in this whole concept.
Diana.
George, you want to throw, do you have a picture of the historic, the train station you could throw up there? I think that it's a really amazing location for a number of reasons. It's right near the front of the center. So you drive right by it. It's very, very part of the visual. And if you think of the history of Atherton, we started off as a community of people coming down by trains. And the building itself, as you can see, is, is really cute. And we could create a real indoor/outdoor feel of that. And what he was talking about, the audiovisual stuff, also in the library, there's most likely going to be some sort of audiovisual display in the library as well, which could point people to this location. So I, I think it's exciting. I talked with historian about it and she had, we have a collection of items that we own that are not ever on display and a collection of many, many, many images that would allow us to really do this, do this a really good job with this, I think. So I think it's exciting.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, George, let's go back to our. Yes, thank you. So we're gonna, this is a great presentation, guys. Obviously, you've looked at it at all angles. And I think it's, you know, gives us a lot of possibilities. And we're, you know, you've just really started thinking outside the box and I give you a lot of kudos to that. And thank you for the presentation. I do see that Councilmember Widmer has his hand raised. I think he'd like to make a comment.
It's a question. Why, why was the old civic center, the old council chambers not considered here? Because it seems to me that that would provide security. That's why we're having other historical artifacts. And is it one that the, the community will be frequenting with? Because it's essentially going to be a community room. And so it makes sense to me that, that as opposed to having to worry about having things out in the open and possibly having them defaced in some manner or destroyed. Because I realize it's next to the police station, but the police aren't going to be sitting there watching it. So I, I, I think, I thought having it in the council chambers, which is a historic building, made it a heck of a lot more sense. Did you not consider that?
So Councilmember Widmer, I think that's a, a very good point. And I know that, I, I, I just want to say that I think that the reconfiguration or the restoration or the transformation of the train station, historic train station to house something like this would entail some glass securitization of it such that it, you know, not that it would destroy the historic features of it, but it could, there has been discussion. I know that I've talked with other residents about how to use that train station and to make an access to close off the, 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 the open area that is facing the train tracks and have it open from the civic center. And so you can close it up and everything. So I think there's ways to use the historic train station such that it would not be exposed and open 100% of the time like it is now. But that's just response to that. And so, so, but that needs a lot of discussion. So the question to the AdHoc Committee about the use of the historic council chambers, I think that, that deserves a, a response.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I, I, both of us probably have a response, but I'll, I'll give you my quick one. I think that's a very good suggestion. And, and I think that there, we could do both. Th- th- this doesn't need to be limited. And in fact, for those, there will be some items of display that aren't at all valuable or that don't require security because it's not a big deal. And anything that does, we could put in the historic council chambers. I, I, I do think there's value to the train station because it's so accessible and so easy to walk through as kind of an entry to the town center. But it could also point people to the historic council chambers, which will be part of the library and therefore not quite as accessible as the train station. But I think it's a great idea and I think we should consider that.
Councilwoman Manuel?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And I was not sure what purposes that we had, we were planning to use that for. I thought this was going to be a community room that people were going to use. Or I didn't know exactly what the purposes were. I know that the historian mentioned a few items like an apple churn and things like that that would be better suited to be inside that building. But I agree with Rick that. But I agree with Rick that both would be really good options. And I think if we have this stuff, finding ways to display it is an awesome idea.
Okay, thank you. So Vice Mayor Lempres.
Yeah, I think first, I think that was a great report and a lot of creativity and thought went into it. So thank you both very much. And I think we're conflating a couple of issues that I'd like to tease apart. One is this idea of like AV and and other ways of displaying, which I think is a great idea and very supportive of. I don't know what that means exactly, but I think it's well worth exploring aggressively. The the train station itself, I have a slightly different vision, which is, and I thought this is where we were going, was as the as the mayor discussed, we were kind of flipping it around. It was me facing the the civic center. And somehow I had thought we had discussed, or at least in my head, I I had heard that we were going to make it actually a museum that focused on the train because the train is so important to the history of the town. And then that was going to be a, you know, we were going to do something to to discuss the the train and the train station. And that makes more sense to me. And if I had to choose, I would even say we drop the legends and focus on the train itself out there if we needed to drop one or the other. But those are those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I don't know why we couldn't do both, you know? I really, I really don't. But I mean, it all has to be the devil's in the detail, right? But all these are great ideas. And Vice Mayor Lempres, you're absolutely correct. It really, there is a lot of history having to do with the train and you can, you know, you just go up to the Redwood City, you know, the historical city hall up in Redwood City and walk around. I mean, they've got a huge space, obviously, but they have a lot of different venues, if you will. And I think that we've got that. So maybe we could just kind of answer. I don't know. Councilwoman Hawkins Manuelian's question about the use of the historic council chambers. Obviously, there's there's the Atherton Heritage Organization that's going to have their office there. And then there's the Heritage Room, I guess, which is like the Diaz. But a lot of it's going to be, it's programming for the library. It's an extension of the library for programming. And so there would be limited use. I mean, it's scheduled, you know, scheduled use, I mean, hours of operation that could be open to the public, but there are, you know, it would not be just open. But those are just details that have to be worked out. So city manager, I think I'm going to open it up to the public for their comments at this point. Is that okay? Okay, so if any member of the public would like to comment on the Legends Ad hoc Committee Report and the use of the train station and council, Historic Council Chambers, any member? And I know Chi Vo would like to speak, but we're going to do that because it's a general question after this agenda item is finished. Okay, so seeing no member of the public raising their hand, I'm going to bring it back to council, Councilmember Diana, you have something else to say on this?
Yes, one of the things that was we mentioned, but we didn't really talk about, I'd like to get people's feelings about is this idea of putting it out to the people so that we we came up with some categories and then asking people to nominate. So it allows, I want to bring that topic up because that's a separate of the building and the idea going forward is the idea of engaging the community and getting people to nominate people. So do we have a feeling of how people feel about that idea?
Okay, so my personal opinion about that, any, any, any way that you can engage our residents in you know, making a community input, I'm off for that. It's just, you know, I I think that's something very, very good to do. I saw a thumbs up by Vice Mayor and Councilmember Widmer, what's your feelings on that, engaging the public?
No, I thought that was a good idea. That was in the in the write up. To, you know, to get the impact because we we don't know everything. There's a lot of people that have been here for a very, very long time. And they have a lot, a lot of history to share. So I thought that was an excellent idea. I thought the report was very good.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And Rick, you have something else to say?
Yeah, so just to respond to the question about what the historic council chambers is intended to be used for. The Heritage Association will retain the workroom that it had previously, which is to the right of the building as you enter it. And it also is taking over the area that will be behind a glass wall that had been the dais that we sat on in the last few years that it was used as a council chambers. But the main room will be used for programming principally for children's programming. And the idea is that the children will walk from the children's area in the library through the open glass doors across the deck into the open doors of that are being built into the main room of the council chambers and for their weekly programming, I think it is twice a week. That will be their area. I'm sure it'll be used for adult programming also. So based on the feedback that I've gotten tonight, I'd say we need to sort of come back to you all with a proposal about the use of, you know, some Athens, Legends of Atherton display both in in the count and the historic council chambers in that big room that'll be used by the library. And to the extent we're going to retain the concept in the train station to come back to you with some suggestion for that. It, but we really do need probably some suggestion on exactly how we're going to utilize that count that train station because Mike's concept of it being, you know, the history of the train is not something we've formally discussed. And I think it's a great idea. I just think it needs to be developed. And and I also think the other charge that that we've gotten is we'll come back with some more concrete suggestion about how to do outreach to the residents with regards to the issue of, you know, selecting or nominating or whatever it is, those that could be Legends of Atherton. And and we'll work with Marion and the Heritage Association in terms of making suggestions, although we also want to leave it open to the residents to come in with their own suggestions. So we'll come back to you with a proposal. Both those issues.
Thank you. So, you know, my direction would be, and I, and I guess when you brought up the audio visual concept, I mean, you, you I see that as like a on one, on one screen, you know, a resident could come up and have a menu of items to then, you know, click on to expand and tell the story, just like at other museums that you go to, you know? And I see Diana shaking her head. So I think that's a brilliant idea and you can get a lot, a big bang out of your buck and, you know, with little headsets and, you know, the little wand. And if you have one or two screens venues for that, I mean, I think so not to tell you what to put in your proposal, but I think that that can be expanded on. So anyway, thank you. And you guys can come back to us in the next month with a report, okay?
Sounds good.
Go forth and conquer. Oh, Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on Rick's point, which is a good one, is I don't know where I got this impression that we were going to do a railroad focused, you know, museum in the
I think I've talked about it a little bit.
Yeah, so we ought to put some meat on those bones somehow.
Yes.
You know, would love to have some proposal to deal with that.
Let's add that to their legends, okay?
Well, that's your call.
I think you should add that to your legends. And Councilmember Diana?
I just want to say I love that idea. And we do have a lot of really beautiful images that can be replicated either in printouts that can be put on something that's safe or also in a multimedia thing. And just so that you know, nowadays, you don't even have to have the headphones because anyone who walks up with their iPhone could get Bluetooth and just hear it on their own headphones. So
I'm so dated. I'm just so dated.
It's called it's safe now.
That's a matter of age.
So, thank you. Okay.
QR code.
Yeah, okay, all right. Good, 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 good. Okay, let's move on to our next item here. Council, City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next one is your council member liaison report from Councilmember Hawkins Manuelian on the donor wall. And for that, Diana, I can put up the the presentation and slide through it as you indicate.
Do we want to take this, the resident who has their hand up this whole time? Before I start? Or do you want to wait, make them wait to the end?
Well, I had made the decision that we would wait until the end of this agenda item, but
Sorry, okay, I thought it was a different.
Okay.
Sure.
Why don't we, Anthony, why don't you ask the resident to make his public comment now? It we
You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I'll I'll be really quick. My name is Chi and I live in Lloyd and Park for over 20 years. Recently, my neighbor has built a fence that is pretty much right on the sidewalk. And I am located right at the corner of Snowden turn into Wilburn. Most of, pretty much all of the house on Lloyd and Park are typically, most of their fence fronts or side do have a setback. It's about ranging between three to four feet setback. This particular house right next to me built right on the sidewalk. My concern is safety. If you're driving on the incoming traffic on Snowden and about to turn into Wilburn, my house is, my driveway is completely being obstructed by this front and side fence. I also have young children that play in the front. And most of the playground structure, the drive, the the driver would not be able to see until they pass that house. I have been trying to go to the city and try to understand if this is the legal bill or permit. I believe they do have a permit approved by the Tower of Atherton. But the biggest issue is is the safety and this is something that it is very new in the Lloyd and Park area.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention and thank you for waiting so long to make your public comment. We can't respond or discuss that at this point, but I'm sure City Manager and our city clerk, George does have his hand raised. I think he wants to say something.
Yes, Madam Mayor, well, Anthony's going to reach out and get name and address and we'll have Monica and planning reach out.
Gee, I just sent you a message in the in the chat. If you could just send that information to me, we'll absolutely follow up.
I think we have a follow up public comment from Resident Mr. Janz, a former member, former council member and former mayor. I'm going to let you speak.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll be very quick. I live on the other side of Chi Vo's house from the property in question. And just to 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 back up what she said, I've heard from a number of neighbors that are actually quite upset about this wall that is being built there. And a quick bit of background, you know, unlike many of our neighbors, Atherton has no design review. And one reason for that is I learned from 10, 10 years on the planning commission is because we do have landscape screening requirements. No one cares how ugly a house you build as long as you can't see it from the road. And in Lloyd and Park, which is the only neighborhood in town with with sidewalks, and up until now, we've had actually very few front fences or front walls. And they're still in the minority. It's one of the things I liked about our neighborhood. But the ones that have been built are all, as she said, are setback a few feet, allowing for some socially redeeming landscaping to come in and block off whatever kind of fence or wall one builds. This one is built right on the sidewalk line. Apparently, the issue comes down to whether or not, it comes down to where the property line is. If the property line is apparently a few feet back from the sidewalk in most cases, then that's where the fence or wall could be built. And and that's what needs to be investigated and we'll look to the town to do that. If whoever turns up to the property line for this parcel and maybe others is actually right on the on the sidewalk line, then I think the the zoning for offenses needs to be looked into, at least for Lloyd and Park. I would put a moratorium in place immediately and address that issue because it's inappropriate. And I would like not like not to see it continue anymore. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask City Manager, did you have a a response? Did you want to weigh in on this at this point? I think that that would be inappropriate, actually.
We would have planning follow up.
Yes, yes, of course. Yes, okay. All right, thank you. Any other member of the public want to speak on public comment at this moment? Otherwise, I am going to close public comment. We will continue on.
One hand from Peggy Lynch. Sorry, Mayor, to open that.
Yes, okay, sorry. Peggy, hi.
Hi, thank you. My name is Peggy Lynch and I live at 91 Wilburn Avenue, next door to the Janzes and next door to Chivo. And we've all lived here for many years. I think I'm coming up on 30 years here or maybe even 30 plus. I just want to reiterate what my neighbors have said. And I also just thought I would share with you a photograph so you can see what we're talking about here. I have to say, this photo was taken a few days ago and they've actually lowered the fence somewhat. But it's still right on the property line and it makes it feel like a barricade, honestly. It's it's really, it's really quite stunning. It makes makes me think of third world countries, honestly. So I'm hoping that perhaps we can get, you know, some some attention paid to this and gee, I I think also something that I learned, and again, I don't know, but Chivo's water meter is on the other side of the fence, so she can't even access it. So there's some issues there. But thank you for listening. I do appreciate it. I appreciate all the work that you guys do. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
I believe that's that's all we have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Anthony. All right. So we will City Manager will direct planning to get in touch with the neighbors and follow up on your comments. So Councilmember Hawkins Manuelian, you want to talk about your donor wall illustrations and presentation?
George, is he going to put it up for me there? So I was assigned to take a look at the donor wall. And basically, there are four categories of donors and the taxpayers. So anything we design should allow for the five levels of recognition. And and we might in the future want to have a design that will allow us to add additional ones in the future. The style of our building is mission and I have these pictures here just to remind you what that means. It's arches, it's bells. And on the lower screen, you'll see where the actual donor wall is. So the donor wall is that little arch right there. And in front of it is an inlaid carpet in the floor. And that's relevant because we can use that as well. So because it's an arch, can you go to the next page? There's a lot of different configurations we can do, keeping with the idea. And on the left here, you'll see we can make, you know, rectangular kinds of of panels with a seal on the top, our city seal. We can do a series of of three plaques that are like they're keeping with the mission style, or we could do something really crazy like doing a full on mission wall or even finding one or putting it in. Just to give you an idea, there's a lot of different configurations. So the most obvious thing to get, and what I want to do today is just walk you through some of the different looks and feels and materials that we can choose. Because once we pick what we like, then we can go out and find the best vendors. So we have to narrow it down a little bit. So the first obvious one would be bronze. And I say that because in that lobby, we already have some bronze plaques that are zinc plaques with raised bronze, bronze letters in Camtum font. So the simplest choice would be to create additional bronze, something in bronze to keep with what's already there. And when you start into bronze, of course, there's a lot of different things you can do. You can do rusted metal with letters cut out. You can do raised You can do raised bronze lettering, which we have in different parts of that same room. Or we could create some sort of bronze bricks or tiles. So can you scroll down? I'm trying to go fast. This first one here is a very traditional plaque. You could imagine in the top center there, instead of that thing, we could have our city seal. So that's the simplest thing you can do. And these are, are very inexpensive. If you scroll down, here's an idea of seeing it where you have it more in a bronze brick. This design allows us to have different levels of recognition. So the bigger the brick, you know, to the smaller bricks. Scroll down there. Here's a really very traditional kind of off the, the, you can just go and buy that and have your own content put in. Those are stock ones. So there are stock ones. There are companies that actually just make these and you give them the information, they put it in. So that's the cheapest way. You wanna scroll down a little further? This is another kinds of a bronze, a different look and feel. Scroll down. And to give you an idea of what we're talking about, if you wanted to buy something like this, this is a standard outdoor bronze thing. This one is six hundred and nine dollars. So you literally can go on the internet and buy these when you get into this category. So let's scroll down. Now, the alternative is to do something a little more sophisticated. And a lot of the walls that are done are mixed materials. This particular one I really like. This one is woven metal with wood. And it also allows for the different sizes. It allows for expanded. You could add more of them. So picture that whole thing within that arch. Scroll down. In, in our case, we wouldn't make it out of that metal. We'd probably do it out of bronze, but bronze and wood. Here's one out of bronze and stone. So here, and I like this one a lot, too. This is where they took stones and put the titles in the stones. The top letters up there is very similar. We have something very similar to that already in the lobby. So there are other places where we'll have those kinds of lettering already there. So this again, sitting inside that arch. Scroll down. And then you get into a lot of other sorts of mixed materials. The one on the right is bronze with different kinds of metal things. One on the left is glass and metal. And so there's a lot of different mixed media that we could have. And that would put us toward a different kind of vendor. Scroll down. Another obvious one is doing glass. And on the right is, you know, just simple etched glass. If you think back to the first little drawing I showed you, that, that's what this is. It's those three kinds of glass things with, with our seal at the top. Scroll down. Here's another example. This is also glass too, but it's a mix of glass and, and kind of more of a, a metal kind of thing, background. So they took a darker background. So that's another approach, also inexpensive. A lot of vendors do glass. We talked a lot about doing brick. Another idea might be to do brick on the wall as well as brick on that carpet. If you remember that little carpet area I talked about. So you could have brick on the floor going all the way up into the arch. The treatment on the right, I think, is really interesting in that it's the, it's more three D. There's actual bricks and they're being held by little metal things. But, but I wanted to show that as an idea because we've been talking a lot about bricks. So scroll down. Another approach is wood. This is not super expensive, but a different set of vendors. The one on the left is a stock one. So that's a company that you can just give your content to and they pop it in those little things and send it to you. The one on the right is a custom one. You see that one's got a tree. It might be something like what we have. Scroll down. There's another approach where they took more of a nature kind of slices. You maybe can't see that, but there's names and there's writing in each of those. Scroll down. This one's a super, another stock one. This one, I think, looks really cheapie myself. I, I don't really like this one. But it's the idea that you can go to places and get a stock one made from, you know, a vendor that already has the templates made. Scroll down. We could always do something more three D. I'm, I'm not proposing this, but the idea that there's something that's freestanding in front of the wall and could have backlighting coming from the wall. So that's another approach. And then the last one I have here is tile. Our stairs going up inside that lobby has mission-style tiles that are, they're not this color, but we have mission tiles going on, the, the treads going, the back. I know it's called not the treads, but the other part going up the stairs. So we could easily pick up that theme and create a custom-made tile wall where we have each individual tile with their names on it and pick up that theme. So what would really help me would be to get a feel from you, which of these look and feel is keeping with our mission style and keeping with the taste and what we want to do. Even if we just select a couple, then I can go about getting vendors that could then get back to us. But as you can see, they're really different vendors and different look and feel. So the one last thing I wanted to say is on the front of the building, we currently have commissioned to make a seal, a three-foot bronze seal. So that's already in our budget. And we, the sign company that's putting the other bronze plaques on is gonna do a seal. So when they do that seal, we could commission them either as part of our wall or if they don't even do the whole wall, they just allow us to make a second one. They can make a second one a lot cheaper than commissioning a new one. So we can look into that as another thing. And also on the outside of the building, and I don't have a picture of the outside of the building here. But I had talked with the city historian and we talked about the idea of getting a mission bell. Not this ones that are here, but mission bells. There is a, a thing called the El Camino bells. You may have seen their historical bells that are all along El Camino. We're about a half, we're half a mile off El Camino. So our his, town historians seem to think that we might qualify even for grants to get that, to get one of those bells. And, but when I researched it a little bit further, they're a little bit small for the scale of the front of the building. But if we, that same company that's commissioned by the state to make those bells, does replica of other mission bells. And I think it'd be very nice to have a mission bell in the front of the building as a, as an art object in the front of the building as well. So I, with that, that's kind of all I wanted to say. But I'd like to circle back to each of you and get an idea of which of these you like and what your feeling is on some of this.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Dan Hawkins-Manwellian. What have, you've really done a, a lot of work on this and a lot of research. And thank you for your report. Want to open it up to our council members for their questions, comments. And I have some comments also to make. Who wants to go first? Well, Councilmember Widmer, there you go.
First off, Diana, thank you very much. It was a very good report. Lots of different examples and I, and I thought it was very well done. You know, if I had to pick one, I, I, I did like that concept of the bronze on stone. I thought it looked, it looked good. But it would have to be put into the, you know, into, into the shape that we want as well as it would have to. We have to maintain what, what Rick and I came up with. I mean, the people that gave a million dollars need to have a little bit bigger display. And this one kind of did that.
Which is the example of bronze on stone, Bill?
It was the one she presented. It's underneath the one that looks like Kentucky. It's on page fifty of fifty-five in the presentation.
Is it the St. Charles or the, the Breier?
St. Charles, yes.
No, the Breier.
Wanna show it up? Can you put it up, George?
Yeah, working on it.
Oh, you're looking at the St. Charles, huh?
St. Charles. I think it's the St. Charles.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought you said that was bronze on stone.
It's bronze lettering up, on the top, you're right. And then the, the little plaques underneath are stone. They're engraved.
I thought that, I thought that one was neat. And, and the one above it, I thought was interesting, except for, you know, I didn't like the shape of Kentucky. Not that I have anything against Kentucky. But you're gonna make it into the shape that we need. Plus, we need to have different sizes for the different sizes of the, of the donors. That's all.
Thank you.
Those are my two choices.
Rich DeGoya has his hand raised next.
Uh, okay, can you hear me?
I can. You wanna put us back on the videos?
Okay, so two general reactions. First, I thought that most of the presentation, it just felt like chaos to me. You know, because you have these little squares with people's name on them. Some of them are larger, some of them are smaller. They're all mixed around. Even the one Breier, the one that was above the St. Charles that Bill liked. I thought with the lines running vertically and the name plaques running horizontally, it just feels like chaos. I think that what we want is something that's clear, that somebody who walks into the lobby, they're not gonna spend a lot of time on this. They're gonna kind of glance at it. And we want stuff to pop out. I thought that the one that Bill referenced, the St. Charles, to me, that was quite good. I, I thought that, that was in the realm of what would be acceptable to me. The one that I liked the best, really only because the names jumped out the most. And, and I like the sizing difference, which is why I think Bill probably liked the St. Charles. I like the sizing difference in the St. Charles because it shows that people at different levels have, you know, different, different sizes of their name plaques. But I, I liked the Vermont Thanks is Generous Alumni House, which looked, I, I, I'm not sure what the medium is. Looked like it was light behind something, but maybe it's just white names on, on, on.
Page is that on? Which one?
Page fifty-two of fifty-five.
Oh, those are just, it's just a list of names.
Yeah, no, no, no. I, 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 I like, what my point is, I liked the one that Bill pointed to because it gave larger sizing to larger donors, which I think we've committed to. I like this because the names pop out so well. And I think we want something that people can look at quickly and the names will pop out. So I like this for that purpose. The final thing I will say is, with respect to the whole issue of the El Camino and mission bell, it doesn't grab me.
Right, okay.
I, I'd skip it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lampres, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to make sure that we are in good communication with Atherton Now on this. We need to remember that all these donations were technically made to Atherton Now. They were not made to us directly.
I, I want to talk about that and directly ask for input on that after I get what you guys like for materials and style. So yeah, I want to talk about that more and give your feedback on that.
Yeah, okay. Then, beyond that, I, I tend to like the more, I don't know what the right word is. Classical ones? That just, you know, that, that is sort of, that feels like it fits our community well. And, and I don't know how much more guidance you need on that. I mean.
Is that a bronze plaque you're talking about?
That's an example of something that I think fits very well, yeah.
Like the very first ones, the real simple.
I think works. I don't know if it works. The challenge there is, is making a distinction between, you know, the various categories of donors. I don't think it would be a good idea to have a freestanding, you know, statuary type thing out front. And I don't think a real, a, a modern look would be good for us. By the way, it's really good job. Thank you very much for all the work you did on that.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to kind of dial in the look and feel of our civic center. And somewhere along the way, I think Diana, you got on track that it was a mission style, mission design. It's never been a mission design. It's never been a Spanish mission design. It has been a Santa Barbara. Classic Santa Barbara look.
Of the architectural style. But yes, I know that. I agree.
But it, you know, so for a mission bell, I think, you know, and I guess maybe I got thrown off a little bit because of the church steeple. I just don't want it to look in any way, shape or form like a church. And I think that with the arch, the arches, the images of the arches that our arch is wide and not so tall and archy. And it got designed that way by WRNS as a, you know, big arched inset thing. And it's got, been built like that. And I just, at that point, you know, we kind of got locked in to that. But, and so which creates a little, but, you know, it, it kind of mimics our arches and our porticoes and things. But it really creates a design construct constraint that, you know, has to be worked around and in. The larger squares or rectangles for the larger donors of which, as I understand it, there are only three of those major large donors of a million dollars. And they would get equal billing of equal size, but larger than, and then I think that the next largest donation would be fifty percent of that. I, I don't know that we got any, I think we got several five hundred thousand dollar donations. But I don't think we got six hundred or eight hundred thousand dollar donations. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't have a complete donor list. I don't have a complete listing of how many. And that's something that I think that we need to get from Atherton Now in order to really complete our donor wall. As far as feedback on the look and feel and the materials, I really think that we need to keep with a very classic, clean, not jumbled look of the larger donors in larger blocks, rectangles at the top. You know, then the, then it kind of fills in from there with appropriate sizing. And I guess there would be then four other levels of donors that would be in various sizes in descending size. So the bronze, I think, is good. That would fit with our look and feel of the interior. Cause we have the, the ceramic tile floor and the inset carpet. It's a very small inset carpet. It literally is only four feet wide by, I think, twelve feet long, I mean, four feet, you know, so it's in front. And that inset is already made. Cause there's radiant heating underneath it. We can't enlarge that. So the, the design that WRNS gave us, very restrictive, that would just seat two chairs facing each other. And they figured, I guess, a two-foot wide chair, you know, facing each other with maybe a small table in between, or maybe even not a small table in between, in front of this donor wall. So I think that we're kind of constrained architecturally at this point. And the carpet that they had chosen, I think we need to rethink that. And it can be something that may have a patterned look, but it has to be small and not cut pile because they had designed something called out a cut pile, a scroll kind of a look.
The arch is fourteen feet by ten feet and it's wider than it is tall. So that car, it has to go to the edge of this. It's gotta be at least fourteen. The drawings that I've seen are very inaccurate. So the problem is a lot of the drawings, the interior drawings that we have are, are inaccurate. They're, they call out materials that aren't even there anymore. And so we never update our interior drawings. But it's, the carpet's gotta be at least the length of the, if it's not the width of the whole arch, that would be really crazy. So you're saying.
We can do a site visit and we can do a, a measurement. We can do an actual, you know, measurement. Because that inset, they made it inset so that it will be flush with the tile. Okay?
Yeah. Well, we, that, I totally agree with absolutely everything you said. And I'm hearing people say that the most important thing is accommodating the different categories. And I started off with that. I did go and look at the site of the. I did go and look at the site of the group that, that had the donors. They list something like a hundred and twenty-five on their website, but there's no amount. So I have no way of, no way of telling what category they're in. And I was given a list. So, um, I'm hearing that we want to acknowledge is the top three and then with the size differences going down. I can do that, or we can do that with any of the materials we pick. So if that's an important item, the next step for me is understanding which material because different vendors work with different materials. If we like the, the stone with the bronze layers, or if we like, uh, plaques, I heard some people like the, the very traditional blon- bronze plaques. And then the one that Rick was talking about was etched glass. That was etched glass with the little round things that are, you know, that are holding on. So those are the three materials that people seem to call out. Does, is, of those, I hear that the size of the things and how we divide it is important. Is the material important and what would be one to?
So bronze would be the most expensive, I think, to do. Bronze, bron- individual bronze plaques would probably be the, the most expensive to do. And then you still have to, no? But if you had individual, you had individual, uh, cut glass and, you know, mounted individually, I mean, I don't think you just want a whole sheet of glass.
So you don't like the list? Sorry, Rick, were you saying something?
I like the list.
Then you were going to go to three different vendors. If, if you've got three different material focuses, then maybe you could go to three vendors and we can see what they propose.
We could, it'd be nice to, the more we narrow it, the better. But a lot of the vendors do more than one. So a lot of them would do the, the glass and various treatments. The bronze, in many cases, depending on what you say bronze, is not the most expensive. That's why I showed you that stock one was only six hundred dollars, but that's a stock one. So i- it depends on what we do. The material in general, if you're having something cast in bronze, would be expensive on the sculpture front, but not necessarily in this because that's a standard site, sign material. We already have the seal being made. So what did you guys think about the seal and getting a second seal and bringing one inside?
I like that idea.
The, the top, the top of the art should be recognition of the residents and taxpayers of Atherton who've paid by far the big bulk of the bill. I mean, Atherton Now contributed five million dollars of a fifty million dollar project. The taxpayers have contributed the remainder, so.
So taxpayer on top.
No, that's what we've always said. We, we already. So Elizabeth raised this issue of the number of people in different categories. We've already decided on the categories. The council formally decided on five categories, that's done.
And, and we, and we got the number too.
The number of people in every single one of those categories. We don't know the. Yet, we're, we're going to know that, but, but Atherton Now has given us the number of people in each of those categories.
That's correct.
So I think we have the information we need to do the design. Well, clearly we need more information to confirm the donors and that kind of thing. But, and, and the names that they want, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that Atherton Now has failed to give us. But, but we have the critical information, I think, that we need to do the design.
So can I, can I make a suggestion? Because you raised the, a really important part, uh, point, Rick, about the taxpayers of Atherton. Since we've got the arch, right, you know, there's the arch. So if you have taxpayers of Atherton, okay, at, that form the arch, that kind of come down almost to the shoulder of where it comes down. And then you have our seal in that middle. Then you get a, kind of a linear, uh, line to put the three big donors across and then fill in the bottom with the rest of them. Do, do you see what I'm trying to say? If I had a, a sketch board, I could do that. But if you take the arch, you go taxpayers of Atherton, which is the top, top billing. But then you have that center section in, you know, in the middle there with the tree or the, the, the seal. Then you've got a level line then to start your big three blocks of your three donors and then fill in the rest in the various sizes.
I don't like it, I don't like it.
Can I just make the observation thing? It's difficult to design something at a council meeting like this, and I'm not sure.
Of course, but, you know, those are, we're just throwing out ideas. I think Councilmember Hawkins, Manwaleen understands what I'm saying. And I think if you kind of do some sketches, uh, on it, uh, it will work. So, because we can't talk outside, we have to talk inside.
That, that has been the problem, that, yeah, we can't talk to each other about it. But, um, all I really need from everyone is what I've been hearing, which is what the priorities are. And clearly the acknowledging the different levels, and yes, we do have the levels. Uh, the, I need to understand what materials we choose. And then the last thing that would be helpful is how do we engage Atherton Now? And one of the things we can do is once we have our three designs, we could then bring them in at that point. Um, so that's what my suggestion would be, but I don't know how you want to go about that.
Okay, well, um, I think that is something that, um, we need to, uh, just continue to try and maybe through city manager, uh, and staff to, uh, get clarity on that, uh, is my, my feeling. So I'd like to, at this time, open it up to the public for any public, uh, comments about this, uh, uh, item, this, uh, donor wall concept. Do any members of the count, of the, of the public have any, uh, comments on this? I'm sorry, Councilmember Widmer, I have opened it up to, for public. I'm sorry, I've opened it up to public comment at this time.
Yeah, no problem, that's what I said, no problem.
I'm sorry, I thought you were barking back at me.
No, I said, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't, I don't see anyone who's, uh, asked to make a public comment, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back. And so Councilmember Widmer, yes?
Sure, thank you very much. Um, I think Atherton Now has made it clear in my discussions that I've, you know, when I've talked to them and got the breakdown of what levels people donated on and things like that. They've reminded me several times that they're supposed to be involved in the donor wall design. So I think that the, the idea that, that Diana had that said, let's make these three ideas and, and let's then review them with Sandy or whoever. I, I assume it's going to be Sandy because she's the only one that's local here. Uh, and, and just get her buy-in and maybe her input. I think that that was a terrific idea that Diana made. And I think that that checks off the box. They're, they're still withholding a quarter of a million dollars roughly. And so we want to make them feel comfortable that they have some input and that, you know, and that we're taking care of things as we said we would. That's all.
Absolutely. So that's, so, um, you want to, uh, kind of create, um, three different, um.
I think what I heard people say was they like the, the bronze and the stone one, that, and that kind of a look, that there were people that liked the traditional bronze plaque look and that there were, there were people that liked the glass, the etched glass look, but not with little small words on them in a list. So that's what I heard. So I will try to go if, if it is, do you think that kind of summarizes what everybody just said? And those would be the three materials? Because I know what the design criteria is, I just want to get the materials. So is that the three, we narrowed it down to those three, is that what the consensus seemed to be?
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
I think that's good.
So, hey, great, thank you. That's, um, so I think, uh, we're going to close this item and, uh, let Diana go back, uh, to work on it a bit more so that we can then, uh, uh, come back with three options and, you know, somehow, uh, present it to Atherton Now or Sandy and have a meeting. I think, um, that's the next step. So, um, George, I'm going to turn it over to you. I think you have an add-on agenda item to talk about.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there's, uh, an urgency item that came up after the agenda was printed and published. It came in on Monday and I believe you all did receive, uh, a copy of a letter from Congresswoman Anna Schu regarding their community project funding, uh, project. But in order to put this on the agenda for some feedback and discussion, I need a four-fifths vote from the council to authorize this urgency item.
Okay, so does everyone on council know what George is talking about? Okay, so I'd like to, uh, I'll make the motion that we add this on to the council agenda tonight as an emergency add-on, may I get a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, we'll call for a roll call vote, we need four fifths in order for it to pass.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes.
DeGolia?
Yes.
Widmer?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lampres?
Hi.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes, we have a unanimous consent, so George?
All right, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
If I could interrupt, I, I actually don't have a copy of the letter, could you forward it to me, George?
Uh, sure.
Thank you.
Uh, so as I'm doing that, it is the community, um, I can't do two things at once here, so just. I wasn't going to talk about this, but I'm not going to be able to, hang on. Lampres?
And, um, just for the benefit of the public, we will make this communication available for the public for, for their review as well.
There you go, and I'm going to put the letter on the screen as well. So it is the, uh, community project funding from Congresswoman Schu's office. And it's funding for only nonprofit and public sector projects in congressional districts. So the intent is to submit a project by March thirty-first, and that's the urgency of it. We need to get something back to the Congresswoman by March thirty-first and there's no council meeting between here and there, uh, on a potential project, uh, within Atherton that would fit, uh, within their, um, community project funding guidelines. The, the part of it also is, it was in a part of the attachment, is there are funding subcommittees at the federal level. And so our project has to kind of fit within one of those buckets. Uh, there's the Subcommittee on Agriculture and Rural Development, Commerce, Justice and Science, Labor, Health and Human Services, um, Energy and Water Development, Homeland Security, uh, Defense, Military Construction, uh, Transportation and Housing. And that's pretty much the only real bucket that Atherton might have, something that would qualify. Uh, and then Interior, Environment, Land Acquisition, Water Conservation Fund and Small Business Administration. And so you usually see this, I, I think the affectionate term at the federal level, and Mike, you've worked there as well, is the Pork Barrel Projects in congressional districts. Uh, something that, uh, each member gets a little pocket of money to, to allocate. We haven't investigated any of this, we don't know what the specific guidelines are. Uh, but I wanted an opportunity for the council to brainstorm around it and give staff some direction if we wanted to submit a project. And that's basically.
Okay, thank you, thank you, City Manager. I, I guess, do we have any idea about the amount of financing or funding that would be part of this?
No, there was no stipulation on the funding amount.
I mean, that's, I mean, it, it's, I'm sure there are some, you know, boundaries, uh, yeah.
Well, I, it, it talked about Department of Defense and EPA and tribal assistance grants, so it could be quite large. I don't think any project in Atherton would be out of scale with some of the ones that may be submitted with another congressional district.
So I, I would believe that she is also reaching out to other councils in her jurisdiction for this also? Which would be Palo Alto?
There's a lot.
A lot, right. Uh, Councilmember Hawkins, Manwaleen?
Would emergency communications, uh, fit into one of those buckets? I'm sorry, I thought you were going to talk about the one point three million that we might get by coming to the city of Atherton. So I didn't, I didn't even see this, so this is.
Yeah, this is, this is a really late breaking. So, so, yeah, I mean.
It's a, there's a Subcommittee on Homeland Security, so there is a section there about Emergency Operations Center grants. So that might be a bucket for us as well.
Okay, I see Councilmember Widmer with his hand raised.
Yes, uh, so I, when I looked at that letter, I thought that perhaps under transportation, maybe some of our bike lanes might be considered. But I also thought that in the environment, in the environmental protection area, the, and, and the water conservation, the, the, uh, the green infrastructure projects that we have planned actually might be a great idea.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Vice Mayor Lampres?
I was just going to say, we shouldn't be too concerned about these buckets. The jurisdiction of these committees is extraordinarily broad. It would be almost impossible to think of something that wouldn't be covered. But I don't think it needs to go directly into any, any specific bucket.
Good.
Uh, uh, having said that, I think, you know, the, the two things Bill raised just happened to be the two things I was thinking of too, was the green infrastructure and the bike lanes is, so we've looked for funding from the past and seen.
Absolutely, okay, uh, Councilmember DeGolia?
Uh, two things, I, I think that they probably want something that is quite well-designed and shovel-ready. Uh, so if we have a bike lane proposal, uh, that we've looked at, like Selby Lane or, or somewhere specific previously, then, uh, that might be more attractive. I actually, uh, because this, you know, she's going to be limited in what she can propose and Atherton always gets the short stick on, uh, these kinds of proposals, I thought that it would be best if we could identify a project that would include either our neighbor to the north or the south. And while I don't have any proposal for the neighbor to the north at this time, uh, in connection with the shutdown of the train station, we did seriously consider with Caltrain the idea of building a bike ped path a- along the right-of-way, including putting a bridge over the channel that would go down, uh, to about Sequoia and enable residents to get to the Menlo Park train station without going on El Camino Real, where there's no sidewalk until you hit Sequoia. So there is the possible, it's just not very well-defined because, you know, it, it, the research hasn't been done. But there is the possibility of, uh, a, a bike ped path from Watkins, uh, through that right-of-way that we had considered with Caltrain, that we don't have funding for and Caltrain wouldn't fund, but they would help support finding a grant. Uh, and this, I mean, that might be one that, you know, would actually work for her because it would include Menlo Park. So that was my thought.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, yeah, um, I, it, I think this begs the question of, about, you know, the conditions, uh, upon which we are, uh, limited to making these suggestions. You know, I, as Councilmember DeGoya said, you know, shovel-ready. I don't think we have anything that is literally shovel-ready. We have, uh, a number of things that, uh, we have talked about and that we, uh, certainly could use some funds to execute. Uh, not the least being, um, the, uh, bike ped, uh, section on Marsh Road covering the channel, which we have, uh, designed for, uh, when we did the channel rebuild and would certainly make that section of, um, of Marsh Road a lot safer and it can segue into the county portion and go on up to, uh, Bay, uh, Road there and, uh, where there is then, um, sidewalks. But, and we're, we're talking about that section, uh, even with the fire district as, that would also be something that, uh, might, uh, benefit them.
Very well, that, that's better defined, that.
Yeah.
An excellent suggestion.
Yeah, that's the first thing. And then, you know, our, our other, my, my pet project, uh, for years and years have been, uh, for our one point, uh, four, one point six mile stretch of El Camino Real, uh, protected bike ped lanes on the, uh, uh. of El Camino Real uh protected bike-ped lanes on the uh outsides um that effectively reduce the number of lanes, which would effectively reduce the speeding. And honestly, um I I get scared more and more with our Hawk beacons because people are not paying attention to them at all. And it's, there's one right here at the end of Alejandra. And uh there's still red lights, but people at, when they see the pedestrian uh leave, they start uh going again. And so it's just, it's really a very dangerous road, our stretch. But anyway, I think the Marshall Road is better. Say again?
We don't have consent on that issue regarding El Camino Real. I would be opposed to suggesting that.
Do we have something in the park that's defined? Rick, don't we have park projects that are actually?
We have a major park project that Stanford is providing three hundred thousand dollars to. So so that's a good suggestion. That that i- it's gonna be a, I I'm not, I mean, right now, we've got Verity Design coming in with a more concrete design than we've had before, which was only conceptual. And it's likely to be uh eight hundred thousand dollars is my guess and of which three hundred thousand dollars is coming from Stanford. So that, that's a very real possibility. The the bigger proposal would be what Elizabeth suggested in terms of putting a boardwalk over the channel along Marsh Road. I think that's a more expensive project, but I think that that's a very good suggestion, Mike.
All right, George?
So we we don't know what the burden is in terms of the benefit, putting together the staff time and resources to gather up all these projects and submit the applications and that sort of thing. So we still need to drill down on that. But these are some very good, uh high-level brainstorming projects. And if the council's okay with it, once we drill down on what the workload is, I can check back in with the mayor and move one or two of them forward. If that's fine.
So can I open it to public comment? Are we, can can we now open it to public? Um Vice Mayor, you want to make a comment?
Just a quick comment. I I think you're gonna find that the um the cost-benefit analysis is is probably uniquely high for getting a a government grant of some sort at this point. It, I've never seen anything like this. And I've been doing government stuff for, what, forty years now?
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. So are there any members of the public interested in weighing in on this? I know it's late-breaking news and maybe a little hard to put your head around, but if you have any comments or questions, please uh raise your hand and we'll let you speak.
And I see none there.
Okay, so seeing none, I'll just bring it back to council. Um so City Manager and uh City Attorney, we and um Public Works Director Robert we've kind of thrown out some uh ideas here. And uh will you kind of follow up and then report back to us?
Well, I will follow up on them for sure, but March thirty-first is the deadline. So what I'm suggesting is we'll follow up is to create it and then check in with the mayor and then submit one.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, um are, let's see, where are we? I think at this, where are we? We're ready for council, council comments? No? Okay, are we ready to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you very much. I want to announce, I do have an announcement. I did get my second COVID shot this afternoon. And so far, so good. I I am, I don't have a headache yet. My arm doesn't hurt yet. I did come home and take, after a couple of hours, take some Tylenol. So I'll see how that goes. I know, Rick, you've had two shots, haven't you?
I have. That's because I'm a little older than you.
No, 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 you're only six months younger, but it's because you're a strong man and the men didn't get
I moved very, very quickly when they first enabled you to get a vaccine.